All right, we're ready to start the hearing on amendments to the RGFA decision for 253 Meadowbrook. And we've given this about forty-five minutes, thirty to forty-five minutes. If we could go through the list of the changes and do you think you could do it in fifteen minutes?
Probably less than that.
All right. Then give us maybe ten, fifteen minutes for comments from our consultants in the board and then open it up for public comments if there are any.
Sure.
Okay.
Okay. Greg LeDault with MGA Architects. We just have a few mostly minor amendments to 253 Meadowbrook based on just taking the project from design development to construction documents and taking another look at things. Some of it is just purely cosmetic or aesthetic. Some of it, some of the changes are driven by site conditions that were discovered after approval. And I can just sort of walk you through, on the front elevation, there were two dormers up on the roof and in taking another look, we found three looked better. We gave it some more rhythm and a little more scale up there instead of seeing so much roof and with the lineup windows below, getting a little bit more definition up there helped the elevation. On the right side, at the, behind the garage, once the blasting was done and all of the ledge removed, there was a little extra depth there. And so we saw an opportunity to drop the grade a bit and get the condensers sort of down, excuse me, in a bit of a hole to help with the sound attenuation that they, you know, because they are close to the setback line and the neighbors were concerned about that. So we feel like that's going to greatly help in decreasing the sound. But from looking, from outside the lot, looking back, the grade is still up here. There's just, you know, about an eight or nine foot swath that is lower and then goes back up to existing grade. I can see that on the.
For you.
Yeah.
What are those windows of the basement in the front?
Yeah, area way.
Oh, that is an area way. It was, it was on the floor plans when it was approved originally and we hadn't drawn it on the elevations mistakenly. So it would show up in the construction documents, but it's an area way below grade.
It's, I mean, the clouded areas on that plan are not the only areas that changed. Pretty much everything is the fenestration, the proportions, everything has changed, not necessarily significantly. But I just want to make sure that people realize it is not just the two clouded areas.
Right, yeah, I apologize. The, we clouded the, what we called were the major things that affected the massing and overall appearance of the building. There are definitely, you know, window changes throughout the house, as you said, and trim changes that were really just sort of refinements going from design development to construction documents.
I have a question. The floor plans don't show the top floor. And where I can see.
The attic level.
The attic level. There are stairs that go up.
To storage space.
At one point, we had discussion about it, but I would like to see an attic.
We can get that, yeah, it's just, it's strictly storage space. There's no finished face up there.
Did you count that attic in on the RGFA calculations?
No. It's completely unfinished storage space.
The dormers and attic are purely cosmetic. They're there to break up the scale of the roof, not to create habitable living space. And also, if you look at the sectional geometry of that space, it really doesn't help make that space very useful because the dormers are so deep in terms of the roof that they, all they do is they look good on the outside, they don't do anything because of the facing.
On the area way, I'm sorry to, but are you going to put a grate over it or sort of fits around it? Or how are you going to deal with somebody not falling into the hole?
We typically put a grate on it.
Okay.
And if it's an egress path, we put a ladder and then the grate is in.
All right, so your intent is to put a grate over it?
Yes.
There's also plankings around it.
Yeah.
The south elevation facing Meadowbrook Road, again, when the ledge was removed, there was a, an opportunity we saw to have the grade remain lower here. About ten feet off the, off the house, it goes back to existing grade. Based on our sidewalk yesterday, we have actually added a wall, it doesn't show up in this because we're cutting in front of it, but in the landscape plan, as you'll see, there is, we added a retaining wall. So grade is up two and a half feet, I think, higher here. And the, looking, your perspective from looking down at the road, you're so much lower. You're looking up at the house anyway, so you really can't really see the tops of those windows even once that wall was in and the plankings on top of the wall are in. Saw the west elevation facing into the lot. Just to refresh people's memories, sorry. This is the elevation we're looking at now. This is Meadowbrook Road. Excuse me. This, the stair tower previously was lower than the stair towers on the front elevation that were the same, of the same design, same genre. And so lining that eve up here where instead of dropping it down, lining it up and making them, making it look the same, we felt was a, an important piece to tie the towers off together and make them all the same. And it helped us with some water management at the roof level as well. This is a cross gable dormer that was added. You don't really even see it in any of the other elevations. It's facing this way. It's a mirror of the dormer that's on this side. The ridge just goes through. So this dormer is here and just goes right through now. Before, it was just a hip with a, with the dormer on it. And this again is the, the stair, the back stair tower that again, you know, was, was lower. We added the transom to match the front of the building. And this is again, the back of the garage where the condensers will be lined up here now and second in depression. There were another change, I failed to mention at the sidewalk, I apologize, is the colors that were previously approved was a creamy yellow. And we're proposing to go to a darker, more natural color that blends in with the surroundings a little bit more. And there were two spots in the, oh, and these are the colors that was. There were two spots in the basement, one over here, which this previously was a slalom grade, was under the screen porch. We decided to capture that as basement space, completely underground, no effect on the landscaping or structure above. And this had previously been crawl space because of the septic system and the septic system was redesigned, so we didn't need to have that need crawl space anymore. So we gained that back as full basement mechanical space. Rob, if you want to go through the triple landscaping.
Could we, could we do civil engineering first, if you mind?
Sure. Civil's easy. Most of the changes on the civil draw really were made to reflect the architectural changes that Greg just went through. We show this retaining wall, which formerly was just in here, extending out back on that back corner, the grate dropping down where the condensers are. This shows where the window wells were in red. Those have now been removed, so the windows are on the face of the building. And this is the retaining wall that we talked about in the field that we added since on the site civil. Basement did drop from the design development, development phase to the construction docks a couple of feet in terms of depth. So that we, rather than pick up more groundwater, we're directing toward Meadowbrook Road. We installed a pump chamber to collect any part of the, this is coming from the foundation drain. And we're going to pump that up to the infiltration system, which we expanded slightly to account for any groundwater that has made its way into the foundation drain. Septic system was redesigned using a more state-of-the-art technology. It has treatment and it's a drip irrigation system called the G O twelve. It's in the same footprint of the old system. It didn't change the grading. It's just a friendlier environmental design that we thought was appropriate for this house. We added an irrigation well in the back for the landscaping. The electric service has been finalized based on the contract negotiations with Endstar. So that we're showing the final location of the pre upon transformer pad and the electric service is running up like this into the house. Whereas previously, the pad was down here and the service was coming in this way. This didn't require any removal vegetation. And I believe that Rob's got a plan to landscape the transformer. Other than that, I mean, we adjusted the roof drain locations just in terms of where the final downspouts were. The spa twisted ninety degrees, that's the old location, this is the new location. Rob can go through that as well. Limit of work did not change at all. It's the exact same limit of work that we had on the original plan. And grading really didn't change at all, other than, you know, in the, in two areas that Greg talked about, behind the garage and in this area, the window wells were eliminated. So that's it for civil.
I forget, was there a generator before?
There is a generator.
Yeah.
Behind the barn. It's. Yeah.
That thing?
That has a.
Is that, that's the same size?
Yep, same size and location.
Okay.
A lot of work I'm going to talk about, sort of talk about something very quick, but there are a couple of things that are, I'll cover with Gregory in a little bit in design. The first is a request to remove an additional red oak tree up in the top corner here. After further investigation, the tree appeared to be borderline dead. It's very hollow in the center and I think for more than a safety and health reason, that's why we'd like to get rid of that. It's a change on this plan. Again, the retaining wall has been added here, as Rob and Greg have both mentioned. A retaining wall added here as well, as both Rob and Greg have mentioned. We've rotated the spa to ninety degrees, as Rob and Greg have mentioned. There has been a small redesign of this patio terrace area and it's really more to comply with setback requirements. At one point, the original plan showed, showed a stairway coming down off that. It was in the setback, so what we've done is we detached it and use our stair and grade and don't have to abide by setback requirements.
And before you go off to this one, the new part of, the new retaining wall, or next to turn, you know, up there, how far is that from the property line?
From the property line? It's actually inside the setback, in the section right here and the section here. Because it's retaining on the upward side, it doesn't have to abide by that. It's something we walked through with Billy Inspector, he's giving us a little walk. Say your question.
So how far is it from?
I would say property line, that's a thirty-five foot setback.
A little around the corner.
Over here?
Yes.
About the same.
Going straight back. There, it's, that's maybe closer, like forty-five feet, okay.
Setback requirements, it's great, great on the setback.
Okay, go ahead, Doug.
Next plan is the plan. These are, this is the tree plant. There has been an additional five trees added to this area up here. One is actually on the Becker property. That was worked out with the Beckers, so there shouldn't be any issues with that. We have moved one of our hemlocks here in regards to the location of the transformer. It's just been moved from one location to another, same general area. And the shrub plantings, as Greg had mentioned, we've added, we've basically reworked a few of these shrubs and then added three more rhododendrons in that area. So we have some pictures of that, you know, unfortunately, they really don't do it justice. They're hard to read, but these were shots taken from down on the street looking up. Just kind of give you an idea of largely evergreens there, only we're doing is adding evergreen understory plantings in this area here. So basically, take away those windows completely. We've added four rhododendrons here as well around the transformer as to hide that, or four foot high, as expected. And then we've just made some subtle adjustments to the existing plants we had on the plan here, just for compounding.
Any changes in lighting?
The last plan I have is lighting plan. And the one thing in the lighting plan is there was a light fixture here since the addition of this door, we've added a light fixture there. So we just moved it from there to there. There's been no change in the loadings.
And the reason why you have the spa circled is because the light has changed location?
That's correct.
Is there a change of the lumens?
No lumen change at all.
Okay.
That is it.
Okay. Before we have comments, I would, I think I should breathe into the, into the record, an email that the planner got yesterday, September 2nd, from John Becker to Betsy Ware. Says, "Betsy, glad to meet you this morning at the Wetterhouse property. Welcome to West, and we are pleased to have such an experienced planner as yourself on the planning board. In order to be timely for tomorrow's public hearing, I am coming with August 22nd email to you and resetting it. My wife Georgiana and I live at 21 Hidden Road, which directly abuts 253 Meadowbrook Road. We would like to request that the following article from the Order of Conditions for this project be addressed at the September 3rd, 2014 public hearing. Paragraph C, small c, prior to the issuance of a building permit for the installation of a generator and the AC condensers slash compressors, the applicant shall submit details of the proposed units and a proposed HVAC plan for review by the planning board. The noise emanating from the generator and AC units shall exceed 40 dBA measured at the property line. If necessary, a sound enclosure fence shall be installed in order to reduce the noise level of the generator slash AC units to 40 dBA. The fence shall be constructed as a solid fence with no gaps between elements of the fence. No gap shall be permitted between the ground and the bottom of the fence and the fence shall extend no less than one foot above the installed side of the generator. We understand that this section applies to both AC units located in the main house and the separate garage building, as well as the proposed generator facing our property and possibly the pool pump spa equipment. We understand from the developer, Kent Stevens, that the design of these elements has progressed and the plans show more equipment than shown in the previously reviewed documents. Since all of the proposed equipment is located adjacent to the building walls, we are looking forward, as discussed in the public meetings, to an expert resolution to the acoustical aspect of this situation. We plan to attend the meeting and look forward to meeting you." And then that's the, that's the email from August 22nd. And then in addition to, from the September 2nd email, "In addition to this request, we would like to stress our concern about the redesign of the north steer windows shown on the north elevation, which directly faces our house. We accepted the December 9th, 2013 redesign after much conversation and today understand much more glass area is to be added due to various architectural reasons. Our concern is for the interior lights, which will illuminate this area throughout the night and which will limit this impact since no tall blocking landscape screening will be present for many years. The site section, which showed the direct view relationship from our windows to this elevation. Could you forward this information to the board members for consideration for the upcoming meeting?" So there are two issues. The first is verification that the equipment, the mechanical equipment outside, compressors, condensers, generators, et cetera, comply with the 40 dBA standard at the property line, so we need some indication of that. And that was stipulated anyway in the initial decision. And then the second issue is a concern that the butter has about the increased glass area for the stair facing his house. So I just, I'm just putting that out as something that we've received. Comments from our consultants?
Can I, before?
Yeah.
Can I add to that? I had a lengthy discussion today with a man named Dudley Domain, who is a director of butter, who owns a lot. And then he owns a house at six Hidden Road.
Okay.
And he pretty much reiterates the Becker's concerns.
A concern about the noise level and the staircase?
The noise level, the lighting, because he's got a buildable lot behind there, and also the screening.
The screening of what?
The screening of his property from his property.
General?
General.
Okay. All right. Comments, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Dave?
Really, no, no changes on site engineering.
Except, well, there's an additional column and some changes to that.
Right, and that's based, you know, they add a grate now to deal with the groundwater. So the caps are based on.
Actual.
Actual numbers.
Actual observed flows rather than assumed flows.
Right.
Okay, and?
And it's an improvement. I'd rather not see that water going down.
Yeah.
Towards the road.
Right. Okay, Kim?
It's just minor shifts in what we'd already approved, so.
Okay.
Is that tree being removed, the one that we saw?
Yes.
Yesterday, it was.
Had a hole in it.
Yeah.
Was that the one that you, that was referred to?
Yes.
Okay, that's the red oak. The red oak, okay.
So I have a question in the demonstration. What change, what percentage change are we talking about?
We didn't calculate the changes of purely aesthetically driven decisions, we think it looks better. I understand the neighbor's concern, but it's a, it's a stair, it's a back stair that's lit internally.
Well, no, I understand that.
And I, I've never had the issue come up before on any project that we designed come before the board where, first of all, I can understand the neighbor's concern, but you hear from another neighbor that Doug did not attend a single planning board meeting to come up with, with concerns over some technical issues in and of that, is again, rather.
I'm merely, I'm not talking about that. I'm merely looking at what was before and what is now. And it looks like.
I mark this slightly.
It, it looks like.
We've doubled the amount, we've gone up a little bit here and we've basically doubled the amount of glass in this area right here.
Downwards.
Downwards.
So again, I'm curious about it from the total, because when you were showing the whole, the long version, the long side, it looked like a lot of, a lot of additional glass.
Yes, it's, we have added more glass to that component. If it's, it's, if it's a big problem, we can.
How much more are we talking about?
Probably, I would say, three and a half by twelve feet, so probably.
Okay.
Yeah.
You're not catching my drift here.
So we probably.
Why don't we put up the one which shows the list?
The east, the east exposure.
So this is the, this is the exposure that's facing your house, correct? This is the.
Talking about the.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's the one I want to see. I look at that one and I see, to me, gobs more glass. Now, I don't know what gobs translates to.
Let's take it through. So here, it's the same. Here, it's the same. Here, it's the same.
Yes.
Here, it's the same. Here, it's the same. And here, it's the same. Actually, these two windows here have gotten smaller. The only thing that's really changed is we're illustrating in this, in this construction document, which is not a design presentation document, the area way that cannot be seen from anywhere. So with the, the only net change here is a window here. So there's a two foot by three foot additional window here, and these windows actually got smaller, so there's actually equal to or less.
He's reading fascia in this window.
But.
These second floor windows are larger.
Well.
The small window windows in the middle.
Above the windows. But above the, no, that, those aren't clear stories.
I understand that, but if you look at those windows, not the ones he's pointing to, the ones in the middle, no, keep going, those are larger than the original windows.
They're four, they're four.
So they're about the same.
Splitting hairs, they're roughly the same.
I'm just looking for, you know, how much more are we talking about? I mean, because tomorrow, I looked at this.
A bit of a light house. You mean like quarter magnitude, five percent, 10%?
I would say less than 10%, probably less than 5%. Well, we can do the calculations, but it's a, these windows got a little bit bigger to, for geometry alignment reasons. But these windows here, which are probably, which are more prominent, got smaller. These windows here got smaller, so they offset. We went from two very large, very vertical windows here to three small triples in this area. And also, we had two very big windows here that went to two smaller windows right here. So it's, you know, these in my mind are purely aesthetically driven modifications to an existing plan that have absolutely no impact on the perception of the house from outside the property line.
I got to say, when I look at this sidewalk, I did a sort of a rough middle calculation balancing the windows that had gotten smaller with the windows that had gotten bigger. And I sort of came up with overall, at least on that elevation, roughly about the same glass area. It just got shifted around a little. That's, that's, that's where I wound up on the sidewalk, because I didn't look at that.
Strictly on the front elevation?
Yeah, on this, on this front elevation, because this is the one that's facing the street.
Well, it's, it's facing.
Well, sort of.
Yes.
Kind of facing the street.
Kind of facing the street. But I didn't, I, it didn't work to me, like, at least on that elevation, like a big change.
Well, there's.
Overall.
I just want, we did one thing that was significant. It has less to do with the amount of glass area, but you notice we changed the color of the house. And went from being a bright, literally yellow and white trim house, which would read through the trees, especially in the winter time, to something that was based on the woodland colors of the surrounding site. And this is going to do more to, I think it's a more beautiful house, which is why we did it, but it's going to really diminish the visual impact of this house from Meadowbrook Road and from the neighbor. So this is, we're almost like camouflaging this house in terms of its payment. The tones are the same as you see on the rocks and the bark of the trees and it's simply going to fade into the flora that, that's there.
The color change is nice, but that staircase, I mean, generally, you don't find staircases except for really in very interesting large houses that have separate buildings that house a staircase. And that's, and you can do whatever you want with the color. At night, the light is going to be bright. You've already got a lot of windows back.
Well, these have, these, these. Well, these haven't, these, these have not changed. It's the windows on the back of the house that will change.
The ones that face, the one that faces the backer?
Yes.
That's changed. The question would be, would there be a way to modify that so that you?
Yes.
Got back to an area of fenestration that was closer to what you had originally?
Yeah, I mean, the reason why I'm surprised, we had a long meeting with the Beckers and the Garneys before this, and, you know, we walked out of that meeting with the understanding that what we had was, you're going to talk about it with Georgina, but we didn't hear from you until now, so it's a bit of a surprise at this moment to find it's still an issue, and if it is, we'll deal with it.
Okay.
And, and Ken Stevens, developer. We added three more trees over what was promised, I think, and they're 20-foot trees. So I think screening, it might be more appropriate. Whether you take light here or take it over here, there's still going to be light. I think we should address it at screening once that tower is built, once that structure is built. We literally went out there with the Beckers and did line of sight over what the existing building, and you've only seen it, it's only first floor frame, first floor framing. I think if we address it at second floor framing and when that tower is built and look at putting an appropriate tree or two between us, and John and Georgina have led us actually plant on their property to make sure we get the maximum benefit out of the large trees that we have at. That would be even a more appropriate.
Well, Ken, I, I, I think what Mark, I, I trust Marcus, he's, he's a good designer, and if Marcus says he can?
I, I think we ought to resolve it to that situation, so.
No, that's fine.
I think what we're going, I mean, from an administrative standpoint, but also a good design standpoint, what we'd like to do is make, the line of glass went up about a foot right here, so the windows are higher. But the, what I'd like to do is maintain this band up here, but bring this line up. So the glass?
Are keeping what the original looked like?
Yeah, so it's more like this, but we need, we want things to align, so this, let me see if I can do this everybody at the same time, but this line?
Pull the sill up.
We'd pull the sill up.
Yeah.
You know, by between 18 and 24 inches. Would that be okay?
That would be good.
Okay, so we'll just do that. Yeah. Well, by a smaller window, and we don't have?
Trees aren't going to help if it goes light down low.
I, I think? We've, we've talked about so many details, whatever we can get done with, we should get done.
Done. Next.
What would that, how are we going to handle the noise generation issue?
We have, again, we've talked about this at length. We are going to do a, develop a preliminary understanding beforehand, and if it's, if it's exceeding the net, the, if it's exceeding the noise thresholds based on the current design, we're going to add the necessary acoustical screening. There are two things that we can do in this area. Well, the first thing, by dropping, by taking advantage of the actual grade that we encountered, by dropping the units into a trench, that's number one. But the concern is the fact that that's a stone retaining wall, that you'll get echo, you'll get reverberation. So step one is to create, in a, put a, in a crystal blanket on the wall itself where it cannot be seen because it's in a trench roughly level with the height, and that's where the height of the, of the condensers. Number one, number two, do it on the, on the, on the uphill side of the trench, so there's sound attenuation. And if necessary, bring that up. But given the site geometry and everything else, I mean, I think it's a, it's something we can deal with as, as, you know, we have to meet the standard to get the ceiling out, so we have a plan in place to incrementally do whatever is necessary to make sure it's not an issue for the duty. There are any place off.
The generator, well, the generators typically have, actually have the, the DBA levels published.
And also they, they come with acoustical jackets on them as well, so.
Right, so you, but it's possible, you don't actually have to put it out there and see how it works.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll make that beforehand. But it's more, I think the, the main concern that we've had is addressing the Becker's concern about the noise being generated by the condensers that are closer to the property. And I think that we have a, the existing, the updated plan, I think is a big improvement, and it also creates many rich opportunities to improve improvement.
Okay. Anybody else? Questions, comments?
I have a question, Mr. Mayor of the planning board, definitely with experience. Is it very typical for an applicant to come back with 26 changes after we've approved something?
I'd say no. This is, this is, this is, there are a number of changes here, that we don't typically see that many come back to us, but.
Well, I would say that having gone through, I think we've pushed the envelope here. I know with other projects that we've done, there've been a lot of subsequent changes that have been made on the, sort of, at the administrative level.
Exactly.
But a lot of the, a vast number of those are really, you know, things that are essentially below the radar, in terms of, you know, windows moving, getting bigger or smaller within the confines. I think that the, you, the, the things that we discussed at length are things that we needed to discuss, the windows on the east side, for example, that we're concerned about.
Generally, don't we have people come back, maybe one or two changes, but they'll be in here a few times as opposed to just one big time?
Yes, I mean, we, for example, on the Berbers House, there were numerous. I believe we came back more than once with things that were handled without.
Yeah.
Will we make new drawings? And if we do accept new drawings, then we need to amend the conditions so that there are plenty of days?
Well, we'll have to put out an amendment anyway, so that's, I'll leave that, that documentation up to Betsy. Other neighbors with comments?
Yes?
Yeah, I'm Jim. There goes your screen. I'm Jim Garrity at 247 Meadowbrook. My wife is away, so I'm expressing her concerns, something which was blessed me for, but that's another topic.
You're on camera, remember?
That's right. She'll be watching the show. Out of hope screening is the issue, and this is a combo request. My wife had met with her expert with Lombardi, and I guess it was you, I wasn't there, so I can't say firsthand, discussing the possibility of removing three large?
Deciduous, I don't know what kind they are, I don't even know, or something else.
Large deciduous trees, which would allow evergreens to be planted more or less in those locations, giving a fuller screen. Right now, those large deciduous trees in terms of a screen are a little more than a truck, because the leaves are all upstairs. I don't know who I talked to about this. It was, my wife had thought it was agreed to by Lombardi, and I think, and here's where I'm getting fuzzy, I think that the cutting down of the trees is outlawed by the town, whether that's permanent or just for the moment, I don't know.
Well, it's, it's in the, essentially the no disturb zone, so we'd have to authorize the tree removal. There, one of the three trees is the oak tree that, it's, I understand it?
It's a fourth, I think it's a fourth.
That's a fourth?
Yeah.
Oh, it's a fourth, okay. All right, so do you know which, which three trees?
They've been, yeah, and in fact, at the meeting, they've been, ribbons have been tied around them, and they've been identified.
The two oaks in the pine that we talked about at the meeting?
Yes.
The sidewalk?
It may be, it may be, yeah.
Yeah.
And I thought we decided that they were all healthy and that?
My wife came with Henry Davis, who was our consultant, and met with some of Lombardi, I think. And, and they discussed this, and it made sense, and we thought actually it was agreed to. And now, I guess now I'm coming to a, do I request that the town authorize? Or okay, the neighbor cutting down the tree, this assumes he's prepared to go ahead and do it. I don't, I need to stop this back here.
Right, so what we, what we need to do, I guess, is, is determine whether it's, we think it's a good idea to cut those trees down or not to cut them down. And so maybe, maybe what we need to do, first of all, is to talk to the, to our own landscape designer.
Sure.
And, and Kim, what do you, what do you think of the idea of cutting those trees down? Because we don't usually like to cut down healthy trees.
Historically, we don't cut down healthy trees to allow for new buffer, and that's what they're asking to do, is to cut down three healthy trees in order to put in a hemlock that's already been planted, that's already in the ground.
So there's a new hemlock there, would you suggest additional screening trees in?
There's, you can't fit anything else.
There's nothing else, no room there.
And the hemlock will do all right? It sounds like it's pretty crowded, but? If the hemlock doesn't survive, the applicant is required to replace it.
Okay. But what happens if three trees go in over the course of nine years?
Then they, I would assume they would come back and request an amendment?
At that point, just to take a few out, make room for something?
At which case, maybe we say, in an ideal world, it would have been a smaller tree that we would have started with, and we wanted more screening at the time, so we, they specify a larger tree. And that's where the balance is shifted, because there's three, it's pretty much surrounded by three mature trees.
But there's an irrigation system on it, right?
Is there irrigation on there?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, and it would never make enough light. And there's obviously, there's adequate light?
With a hemlock.
Okay, yeah, but I mean, there's enough light coming, I mean, these guys are like lollipops, right? So it should be coming in from the side, the light.
Right.
So there's a chance it'll survive.
Well, as I, as I understand from the town's position, and I'm not mad, I just don't understand that, that the town's position is, we don't cut down healthy trees in order to establish better barriers. Is that accurate?
I would say pretty much.
I'm not trying to trap you, I was just?
Screening.
Screening, thank you.
New, new screening. We would cut down healthy trees in order to plant new?
Screening.
Especially trees of that scale.
Right.
At, at the sidewalk, when we took a look at it, one of the thing, one of the comments, and I think it was your comment, was that, that, that putting that screen tree in where it, where it is in contributed to the sense that these trees were not equally spaced out as new plantings, but that it was a more naturalistic look.
Right.
Is that, was that your?
I think the hemlocks as a whole, if you look at a hemlock forest, for instance, they grow very tight together. Will there be some dieback within this hemlock grove? Sure, but where it's, where it's important, where the screen is, it's going to maintain. I see no issues with the plans as they are at this point.
My wife does.
And they've been installed as approved.
I mean, her position, I, you are understanding part of this, in every meeting, is understand, did she meet with you?
There was no agreement ever made that we were going to remove trees. I was a part of a meeting with Henry Davis?
Yeah.
Myself?
She was on the meeting, there was a clear understanding that we weren't accorded.
We at one point requested removal of those trees, this was back in January.
Yeah.
And Kim basically gave the, the same answer she's given now. And that's something we've invited by.
Okay, I mean, she didn't give us a loss, that's why I didn't.
Yeah. Jim, I'm reluctant to tell people to cut down healthy trees.
No, no, it's, it's town policy, it's town policy.
It pretty much is, yeah.
I mean, I'm not here, I'm not bitching and mowing.
So you can tell your wife that it's our fault.
That is not going to fly my sleeve.
But it might save you.
Sounds like it's your fault to me.
Okay, good, then, any other comments from anyone? Everybody okay? All right, then, then what we can do is continue this to, to a certain date to review the draft amended decision. What date looks good to you, Betsy? Sometime April?
April?
Just kidding.
How about, you know, 30 on the first?
Well, if you went to April, pick a wall that changes something.
Go, go teasing.
I'm sorry.
The October 1st, 9/3, we'll review the amended decision, and that'll be that. All right?
Thank you.
I'm going to need copies of the?
Here are the links.
By the way, I first have a meeting.
He's welcome. Well, call the right.
Oh.
Yes. Oh, thank you.
Down Harris, at the pole.
Okay.
I know that.
Probably had a white veil.
I know that.
Would they have?
Probably about the white.
Two young girls.
Yeah, probably about the younger.
We just said before you go. You here working or? There, there's a, there's a queue. You look good. Yeah, well, first of all? Yeah. He's changing lines.
Yeah, yeah. Looking sure?
Zero. Where do you want to sit?
I love this.
You guys should take one. I don't know. Best eating? Yeah, it's the best. He says that's the best eating.